All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cellphones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on television, on Comcast Channel 99, and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles is absent today. Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we just thank you for the blessings of life. We thank you for your blessings on this great city. We just pray that you will anoint the council today with wisdom and knowledge and making the important decisions that affect all of us in this city, be it with the mayor and his staff. God would just ask for our state and our nation that you would just keep your hand on us as we try to keep our focus on you. We just pray that you'll continue to watch over us and keep us safe, and we'll give you the praise and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works Committee work session and city council meetings held on May 1st.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of April 27 through May 3rd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, is the Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask Ms. Carol Larkin to come up, please. And she with her?
Yeah, I'm gonna take a picture.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Whereas music plays an increasingly important role in our world today, music is one of the most sublime human pursuits and is subscribed by all races and creeds. Music is the language of all peoples and one of the greatest forces in creating peace and harmony. The National Federation of Music Clubs dedicated to encouraging young musicians to increase in musical knowledge and to advancing America's music and its cooperating organizations join forces to direct attention to the dynamic influence of music in everyday living. Whereas the National Music Week themed 2018 is music, the universal language. Now therefore, I summon out the Mayor of the City of Gaston by the virtue of authority vested in me to hereby proclaim May 6th through the 13th, 2018, is National Music Week in the City of Gaston, and ask that all citizens of the community observe and take part in activities recognizing the importance of music, musicians, musical organizations to the cultural life of our city, state, and nation.
I'm Carol Larkins. I'm the Alabama Federation of Music Clubs President, and I thank you for this honor. Every year, the mayor, his staff, especially his secretary, is so happy and friendly to me and to give me this proclamation. On behalf of all of the music clubs in Alabama, and also for our children that go to school that you so help us, helpful, and give us an opportunity to have music in our schools. If anyone did not go to the EYO Spring Concert just this past weekend, they missed a very, very good show. It was one of the best ones we've had. And some of the children have been there since they were in the 5th or 6th grade and all the way to high school, and they're graduating seniors. But this year, they had some that only had one year experience, and they only get to practice one day a week. And you would be amazed at the ability, the amount of love that they give to music is really amazing. And once again, I want to thank the mayor and the council for keeping us, as you hear on the TV sometimes, between your gas and electric company to give money to the schools to keep music there. And I do appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I want to say a couple of years ago, as a big group of the cultural arts, the music and the youth orchestra and the dance, I guess you'd call it ballet, they went to John Jay College, which you've heard about on TV if you watch Law and Order. Dancers didn't dance, but over at the college, the youth orchestra played, and they were down below. The people couldn't see them, and it was packed. And they performed, and they brought them up, you know, to where everybody could see them. And I was standing outside, and one of those people from New York were coming out and saying, "God, that was teenagers. I thought that was, you know, really an orchestra deal, but they were just amazed. They just kept talking and talking all the way out, and I just thought that was something really neat for our city to be there."
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mrs. Larkin, for your continued service in serving as a strong advocate for music and music clubs, so we do appreciate that. Under unfinished business, item number 8A is an ordinance rescinding ordinance in, I'm sorry, ordinance number 011-17 regarding transportation network companies. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. Alabama House Bill 190, signed by Governor K. Ivey on March 1st, 2018, provides for transportation network companies to be governed exclusively by state law. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Items number 8B and 8C, for these items, no council action will be necessary regarding 3330 Madison Avenue in District 6 and 2812 Scenic Highway in District 7, because these nuisances have been abated by the owners. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1911 Moten Street in District 1. State of Alabama, subject to the possible rights of redemption by the estate of Al Marbury, the estate of Maude Marbury, the estate of Ernest Jones, and the estate of Christie Jones Marbury being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed our case in October of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
The resolution concerning 707 Bellevue Street has been removed from today's agenda. Due to errors in the legal description, a new hearing will be scheduled at a later date. Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens against property located at 200 Lawless Circle in District 3, Ernest Jones, and the state of Alabama being the last known owners. This is for demolition that has already been performed, and the amount is $2,641.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens against property located at 908 North H Street in District 3, Jack Low Jr. with possible rights of redemption by the estate of L.M. Lindsay being the last known owners. This is for demolition that has already been performed, and the amount is $3,166.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearings are resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for grass cutting work that has already been performed, and we have 11 locations. These are all located in District 5, and the owner is Don F. Bradford. Don F. Bradford, Inc. 13A is 100 Waterford Place. 13B, 104 Waterford Place. 13C, 106 Waterford Place. 13D, 102 Waterford Lane. 13E, 104 Waterford Lane. 13F, 106 Waterford Lane. 13G, 108 Waterford Lane. 13H, 110 Waterford Lane. 13I, 112 Waterford Lane. 13J, 114 Waterford Lane. And 13K, 120 Waterford Lane. Each of these are in the amount of $131. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Okay, if you would, if you'll come to the podium, just give us your name and address, sir, for the record.
My name's Don Bradford. I live at 1507 Bellevue Drive, and I own Waterford Place. The property is in question here, and first of all, I appreciate the nuisance abatement. I mean, I'm not against that in any way whatsoever. And I appreciate the letters coming out, and I appreciate the fact that grass needs to be kept under 12 inches. I'm well aware of that. It just so happened that last year, I contracted a gentleman who cuts my grass. And not only does he cut my grass for these lots, but he also cuts, and I have a photograph, a quarter mile strip of the city property that he cuts every two weeks for nine months. I cut it 18 times a year at no cost to the city to get my road cleared so we can get into the subdivision. I have photographs of everything. On that particular day, Andrew Hollis, whom I had contracted to cut my yard, called me that morning. He was on the way out there. Went out there, he's cutting my grass at 2:00. He finished it. I went out and wrote him a check, which I have here on the 25th. That check cleared the bank on the 25th for me having paid him to cut my yard. I've got the council check, and I'll give you all a copy of it. He only charges me $200 to cut the whole inside of my, the Waterford Place. Every lot I've got in there, all the right of ways, he cuts the city's right of ways, he cuts the common lot, he cuts my lots, and he cuts the triangle in the center. There's the check canceled on that day, on the 25th. So I said, "What's going on?" You know? Here's the city wants to charge me $1,400 to go out there, which that's government at work. And here I am, I paid my guy $200. That's private enterprise at work. So I want, you know, I want it straightened out. I paid for my grass to be cut. I want to know what's going on. So I object to anybody putting any liens against my property. And it's not only going to be objected here, it's going to be objected somewhere else if this goes through. Please understand that. This is the road that I cut every two weeks, I mean, every, twice a month, every two weeks. This is the entrance gate down at Eastview, where we go in on the preliminary subdivision on the left. We keep that cut, and Eastview is never cut. I asked the city to go in and start cutting my right of way for me to help me out a little bit. Twice, I've seen a bush hog out there cut a five-foot strip up and come back. That's all they ever cut. They cut the weeds along the edge of the road. And, you know, I've just, so I just go in and cut to the property line, and I cut the city's property. How much is that worth? 18 times? I paid $150 to get that strip cut 18 times a year. All my grass cutting cost me $15,000 a year. And so I just could not understand, and my wife said, "Wait a minute. We've got a check on that day where you paid Andrew Hollis $200." Took him four hours, $50 an hour. At the end of that four hours, I met him on site and wrote the check on site. So that's all I've got to say.
Can we see those pictures, sir?
I'm handing them out. You can have all of them. Copy of the check and my subdivision. And we're going to have 115 homes down there. It's already been approved. We've got all but 47 of them already developed. Streets are in. And let me say something else. I spent a half a million dollars, half a million dollars, putting water and sewer in that place and gave it to the city. That's, I gave the street, gave the curbs and gutters to the city. Every time I go down to get a permit, I have to go down to the water department. I have to pay $480 to attach to my own water system in a building permit. Why is that? I gave the city a half a million dollars just in water and sewer. And contractors, other contractors in this area say, "You are crazy as you know what to develop a subdivision within the city limits of Gaston." That's what they tell me. I mean, so, and I can see, but I mean, I've got a beautiful place down there, and we're going to develop it out. I was born here, and I had chances to move to Huntsville and develop in Huntsville, Birmingham, all over North Alabama, but I chose to stay right here in Gaston. I developed Cross Creek. I developed the area behind Pruitt's, barbecue down there, all that's mine. I built the condos across from the country clubs. Those are the few things I've done, and I'm not going to pay for grass cutting twice.
Mr. Harbison, let me ask you about, I'm a little confused. Are you saying that the city did not cut your grass?
They did not cut the grass. They may have been up on their, it may have been in their docket to do that, but my man went out there that morning and cut the grass. And I watched him, you know, as he, as I left. Four hours later, I came back, and he was finishing up. I wrote him a check. So what's going on? And you've got the council check out there.
I just want to know, I didn't understand in your presentation when you were arguing about how much money it was or whether the city did anything.
Yeah, well, I paid 200, I did pay $200, and the city was asking 1,400, you know, for my lots down there. I need a little help. So anyway, I appreciate you guys, I really do. I appreciate the nuisance abatement, and we try to stay on top of it, and I'm thrilled. Thanks. Anything else you need from me?
You're good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bradford.
You have everything you need. Thanks.
You need me anymore?
Is there anyone, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
That's in my district. I moved, and we tabled for two weeks to find out what's going on.
Good morning. I can tell you that on September the 5th, that I went down to Waterford Place, and there were several lots that needed to be cut, and we got a work order on October the 25th where Public Works said they went out and cut all those lots.
Do they have pictures of what they?
We do not have pictures. And these were not the only 11. It was about four more, and those people paid their bill.
Mr. Bradford, did you hear what she just said?
I'm sorry.
You might want to listen to what she, can you tell them one more time? He's busy talking.
On the 25th of September, we went to, no, on the 25th of October is when they say they cut it. But on September the 5th, we went to look at that properties, and they were all overgrown.
Right.
And we turned then those work orders to our Public Works Department to cut. And on September the 25th is when they said they cut all of them.
They said they told me it was October 25th.
That's when they cut it.
October 25th.
October 25th. Yes. Me too.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Billingsley, I made a recommendation we tabled for two weeks till we find out what's going on.
Second.
So we have a motion to table and a second. Is there any additional discussion?
I would suggest in the future, if we cut it like on October 25th, we need to be taking pictures of it.
We, we.
Because we got a man that can show a check, plus he got two witnesses it was cut himself. So.
We discussed that in pre-council about the Public Works taking pictures, so.
Seems to me like he's got the witness and the check, and we've got whatever we got.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table all 11 resolutions for two weeks, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table for two weeks.
All right, is there anyone? I'm sorry. Apologies. Item number 14 is a resolution awarding bid number 3373. This is for TV broadcasting, broadcasting equipment and related services for the city's public education government channel. The Purchasing Department has recommended awarding the bid to Encore Broadcast Solutions, and the amount is $29,905. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Okay, is there any discussion? I think it's worth noting that this bid was significantly lower than the others that were presented, so as it relates to this type of equipment, I think this is a good outcome. All right. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item number 15 is a resolution awarding bid number 3379. This is for paint and paint supplies for the community development program. The Purchasing Department has recommended awarding the bid to the Sherwin-Williams Company for the unit prices submitted. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
This is our paint program, but you will have to get, go through community development, and you have to qualify for it. Then we have to have volunteers to paint the house. So we have paint out there. They pay for the paint and the equipment to paint the house. It's only the outside of the house, so.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item number 16 is a resolution authorizing application and acceptance of a Bureau of Justice Assistance Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant. This grant is a 50-50 match for purchase of 60 ballistic vests, and the amount is $31,350, with the city being responsible for $31,350. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item number 17 is a resolution authorizing acquisition of property adjacent to the Nakalula Falls Park. This is for lots 9, 10, 11, and 12 on Woodland Drive, and the amount is $6,200. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item number 18 is a resolution authorizing acquisition of property adjacent to the Nakalula Falls Park. This is for lot 13 on Woodland Drive, and the amount is $2,500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
New business? Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent for resolution awarding bid number 3380 to the Community Center of Renovation Phase 2 Project to Houdak Construction Company in the amount of $1,700.
Okay. Is there a second? There's a motion to consider. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is the old General Forest Building right there beside the Boys and Girls Club. We're going to renovate that building, put a police precinct down there. We're also going to put an additional library. We're not doing away with the library in Alabama City. We've got, we're just putting an additional library there. And also, we're going to put our transportation center down there. It's going to be the trolleys and the darts, and they're all going to work out of all that right there. This is a good day in Alabama to see something like this happen over there. It's quite a bit of money, but, you know, if you're going to have something nice, you got to spend the money, and that's what we're trying to do, make the citizens safe and convenient for everybody over there.
Okay.
I just wanted to note that I didn't know about the library. I thought there were other plans, so maybe I can get up to speed on where the library is going to go.
Yeah, it's just an additional library. We're not closing what we got.
Yeah, I know.
Those folks down on that end of the city, White Avenue and all across there, lower end of Alabama City and South Gas, and they can have a quicker access to get to the library and also the Boys and Girls Club right there, the kids who go to it this summer. It'll be like 90 days before this is finished, but we'll get you up on speed on that.
I'm not too sure I want to get up to speed on it, but anyway, I did want to just note that I didn't know anything about it.
All right. Is there anything else? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
All right, is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards? Citizens requests? Mr. Cole?
President Williams.
Morning.
Dean of the Council, Mr. Echols, and to all the council members, to the mayor, and to all in the auditorium. And thank you, Mayor, for letting me come back to the city. But seriously, Mr. President, I do have things to say, but I want to make an acknowledgement with your permission. We have my niece here, Ms. Yolanda Kimble, and some of the students from Gaston City High School. She had written a letter, I think last month, to let the council know she would be here, but they're not on the agenda. And if it takes up my time, it's fine. I would like for her to come up.
We're, we're going to.
Do you have that covered?
We've got that covered.
Okay, well, she didn't know it, I didn't either, but I want to make sure. Thank you. My, I'm here today to speak on a couple of matters I have spoken on in the past. I'm not going to be long, Mr. Mayor, so we won't get into a confrontation. But it's dealing with the entry level rate increase for the police and fire department. I know you'll soon I know you'll soon be working on the budget, and this is very important. And I know I have spoken to both Chief Carroll and to Chief Jaggers, and I know what they feel on this. And I know the council supports the police and fire department, but we need a little bit more lip service. The increase, I think the police officers start off at thirteen thirty-nine. There hasn't been an increase in the entry level rate in over ten years. Same with the fire department. Now, I'm not going to try to tell you how to do it or what to do, but when you do your budget this year, look and see if there's something you can do to increase the entry level rate, because we need to find police officers to be our first responders. And for it to go this long without an increase, I think it's sad, because public safety is the first duty that all you look to. So when you go into the budget, please consider this, because we're losing officers, some are retiring, and also with the fire department. So I think if you look into that, and you're only talking about the ones who are going to become officers, I think something can be done. Secondly, on here, you saw what I have benchmarked for the Board of Education. And I know you do not operate, they have their own board, but the city gives the Board of Education one million dollars, I think, each year. I think as a city, you should set benchmarks for things that you would like to see them do. The test scores are low, if no more than to tell them you want the scores raised. You just giving them money, and you don't say anything. You do appoint the board members, but you are the ones who give them this money. So you ought to set some benchmarks for things you think they should do and they should achieve. Then the process now of getting a new superintendent. I'm glad to have met some of the students out there, but there are some issues at that school, Gaston City High School. We won't get into that at this time, but I just want you to get some benchmarks. You're going to give them this money, tell them there are some things you are expecting them to do. That's within your right as the city leaders in this city. Last of all, and I'm going to sit down, I have no personal animosity against any of the council members, nor this mayor. My disagreement with you, if we have disagreement, is just on policy, so it's no dislike. And Mr. Echols, to you, I understand you're retiring. Want to thank you for your service to this council and to this city, and for the person you have been on this council, because you and I have had disagreements. But one thing about it, after our disagreements, we eat at the same place. He come over and asked me, "Are you okay? Is everything all right with us?" It speaks to the type of character that he is. We can disagree, but we do not have to be disagreeing. And I know being a public service is a thankless job. Everybody wants you to do everything, Mr. Reed, but when it comes down to thank you, everybody's complaining you're not doing enough. So I thank you for your service. Last but not least, I want to say this about the mayor. Some of you do not know that the mayor and I share black history in this city. Isn't that right, Mr. Mayor? Some years ago, before he became mayor, long before he became mayor, he coached at Armahinsom. I coached at Robert Colley. I had a very good football team, and I wanted to play one of the white schools, just to see how good my team was. Called Discu, called Litchfield, called Forest. None of them wanted to play, which I understood. So one of my mentors, Mr. Joseph Robinson, said, "Well, call Sherman." I said, "Sherman who?" Said, "Sherman Guyton at Armahinsom, he'll play." Never had met him. I called him, and I asked whether he'd play. He said, "Yes," and I was surprised. I said, "Well, do you want us to come to you?" He said, "No, I'll come to where you at." I didn't know if he was afraid we would get run away from over there by playing, or he was just bad enough to come into the hood. And he did. He came to the fieldhouse, brought his team, all the white boys, black boys, shaking hands. It was the first time in the city of Gaston, the first time in this county, and the first time, thank you, that's not my time. Okay, okay, thank you. But that was the first time in this city, in this county, and possibly in this state, that an all-black team had played an all-white team. No paper was there, no one, but it happened. So I respect this man. We just have disagreement on policy. Now, hopefully, he still likes me. If he don't, we may still have further disagreement. But I just want to set the record straight on this, that this is our city, and we need to come together. I spoke to Mr. Reed last week, and one of the things he said, two things that stuck out. He said, "If a person can read, they can comprehend." And if anybody wants to come to this city, the first thing they're going to look at is what type you have education. They're going to look at the schools. And right now, our schools are not in a state that people really want to come here. And people are not together. We need to get together, and I'm going to ask you again, just one other time. Please consider appointing a biracial committee that can deal with the issues we have in this city. They can come and make recommendations to you. Let it be three whites, three blacks, so you will have to get a consensus. And I'm going to speak before the Board of Education, they're going to ask them the same thing. Our city is in a schism. We are not together, but it doesn't have to remain that way. Thank you for the time, and you all have a good day, and I won't be bothering you no more. I know election time is coming up, so I'm going to let you roll through that, and after that, I'll be back to see you.
Joe, can I ask you one question before you go?
Okay.
All that was good you told us about Sherman bringing this team down and everything, but you didn't tell us the outcome of the game.
I won the game. I didn't want to.
Okay, I was just curious. Okay, I was just curious, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cole. Tracy Pondit?
Thank you for letting me speak today. I was hoping you'd call Robert next, because that's going to be hard to follow. But I do just want to update everybody on R S V P, the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, what we've been doing the past year, and to thank you for letting us have space at Banks Park and Elliott to do our free tax program. If y'all know, that's the biggest thing we do every year, and this year, we did two thousand one hundred and ninety-eight federal tax returns, and that's not counting fifty-three prior year returns. We always get people who come in and say, "Well, I didn't file my taxes last year or the year before," so we do all of it. We got back those, it's a free service, so we got back those people one million nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in federal tax returns that they get to keep in their pocket and hopefully spend in our cities. And six hundred and thirty-two thousand of that money was the E I C, Earned Income Credit money, which is, of course, the federal government's biggest way of putting money back into working families' pockets. We also have, talking about education, we have a new program, Reading Buddies, which we got a grant to do, and we bought the material, and we have twenty-three volunteers now in Gaston City Schools, Edwell County Schools, and the Atala City School System, tutoring children on how to read and get up to grade level so that they can go on and get better jobs. But thank you again for your support.
Thank you.
You didn't get my tax money back. I had to pay.
Yeah, me too.
You didn't come see us.
We will next year.
We will next year.
Robert Smith?
I'll make this kind of brief and quick, but I just wanted to come up and give a report on our downtown music festival. Just over a year ago, we had our inaugural downtown music festival at Couso Landing. Ms. Anna Popovich was the headliner for that show, and Councilman Williams called me out on it and said, "We hope you're going to do it again." Well, we did it again. And just this past couple of weeks ago, we had Ms. Tasha Taylor as our headliner, a downtown music festival event. Just want to take just a second to recognize Ms. Kay Moore with Downtown Gaston and Mr. Steve Gilbert with Insurance Facilities where I work. Without the two of them, without Steve raising the money and Kay organizing, helping me to organize everything, it could not have been possible. But really, the reason I'm here today is to thank the council and the mayor for getting behind this event and supporting us with the city infrastructure. A few people that need to be noted. Gaston Public Works, Mr. Mike Hilton, Mr. Court Barber. They got behind this project a hundred percent, as they did last year. Those are fantastic men to work with. Mr. Opie Teague, the electrician, was there every time we needed him, and we did need him, because believe it or not, this takes a lot of electricity to put these things on. Public safety, can't say enough about the Gaston Fire Department. Chief Carroll, EMS Chief Will Reed, they were fantastic, supported the event. Police Department, I met with Captain Keener, and he handed out the project off to Lieutenant Ferris, who came in with the special projects team. They did a fantastic job providing security for the event. I'd like to thank the Edwell County Sheriff's Department, who provided the bicycle rack fencing for security and everything. Some other citizens that jumped in as volunteers, Ms. Tina King, Kings Olive Oil, and her husband T.C. Morgan. They take care of all the entertainers during that event. And you guys, if you've never put on anything like this, you can't imagine what a headache that is, because they can be demanding, except Ms. Tasha Taylor was not. She was a pleasure to work with. Edwell Tourism, Hugh Stumpf, did a fantastic job coming in, helping us promote the event. Also, just countless other volunteers, Mr. Jeff Johnson and Ms. Mary Wood, who's no longer with D G I. She's moved on to another job, but she came back and helped us just countless hours. Eric Wright, he was there. Mary Catherine, they were there helping out. Just, I can't say enough about the importance of having, when you do something like this, we were talking about football earlier, we've been talking about music. This is just kind of fitting, I guess, that y'all put me to the end to wrap it up, but you know, music's something that everybody can get behind. And when you put together a team like we have in the city of Gaston here, we've definitely got the right people in the right places, and this group comes together, and they put it on as a team. I could not do what I do with this festival without the team that I have behind me. I just want to say thank you. And also, it looks like, if you're going to call me out again, we're looking tentatively at May eleventh for next year. So, thank you very much. Oh, yes, yes. Ms. Jan Way, to Ms. Julie Lassiter. Julie is, I don't know how long she's been with the city, but she's running those Couso Landing docks and everything. I can't say enough about her. I think she was the only one that was more nervous than I was, because those of you who came to the event, I don't know if you realize, there were seventy-six trucks with boat trailers in that parking lot at four-thirty, and the concert started at six-thirty. So the organization that they helped provide to get those, to get that parking lot flipped over, can't say enough about that. So, thank y'all.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you for providing that good piece of background and information as it relates to the event. Really proud of how the event took place and how it came off. And of course, we're excited about what may be in store for us going forward. So we definitely appreciate the commitment. And I think we would be remiss if we didn't mention the fact that that's a free, that's two years in a row. These have both been free concerts for the city. So while we're not averse to doing paid events, you know, but it's always good to be able to put on and sponsor free events. People tend to like that price point a little better. So we're glad with the two events that we've had, very excited about what we've seen, and looking forward to more events going forward. So thank you, and thank you for the diversity in artists, and I know there are many in the community who appreciate that. All right. Remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor?
Yeah, there's a lot of things that go on. Of course, you know, I got, there's a group I always call the Againners. They're against everything, so it don't matter what you do, but that was a great, great show. Everybody had a big time. Food was good. It was really good. On Mr. Cole, about that football game, I was just thinking, I believe I had seventh and eighth graders, and you had ninth grader. I'm just joking, I'm just.
You had the referees, too.
All right, Mr. Echols. All right, Mr. Worthy?
I don't worry about that.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, I'd like to announce that Monday, the fourteenth of May, I'll have my community meeting. It'll be at six P M. at the library. Everybody's welcome to come. That's it.
Okay. Councilman Kinnon?
I just want to say it's a good day in Alabama City this year. We're getting, we had the Boys Club redone, the old gym redone for the Boys Club. We spent a lot of money there for those kids, and it's a tremendous success. They moved, didn't have anywhere. We let them use the Coliseum for a while, and we got them in that down there. Redone, redone all that, and it looks really good down there. It seems like all the kids that go and their parents are really happy. Now we're moving a police, we're getting a police precinct, the library and the trolleys down there, and that's just going to make it even better for people in Alabama City. Probably help our crime rate. Our kids can go to the library over there, an additional library, and our trolley people can be safer where they are. Our trolleys and dark, we've got now, that building's falling down. It's probably been there fifty years. It's falling down, needs a lot of attention, and hopefully, this will do everything we need to do in Alabama City right now. That's all we got.
Okay. Councilman Reed?
Sure. Chairman, I know we all missed River Fest and all the preparation it took and all the planning and this sort of thing, but these people, downtown music festival, Kay and Robert and Steve and everybody concerned, it just proves that we can do it ourselves, and did do it, just two times in a row. And we went through all kinds of whatever in preparation.
Oh, I know it.
That's the proof. It's there. Local people actually did it without paying, what, twenty-five thousand dollars for the privilege?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right. Do want to take this opportunity very quickly, and if there are no objections by the council, to give some space for Ms. Kimball. She brought her class out, I think it's thirteen students. All right, so if you want to just talk about what they saw and what they've seen, or what they will see this afternoon? Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Just don't talk about your daddy, okay?
I'd like to say good morning to the city council, to the mayor, to the president of the council, Councilman Williams. I would like for my management principals' class to stand, if you please would. We sit there, thirteen of them. I'm a teacher at Gaston City High School, and I am, I come up under the umbrella of career technical education, and I teach two classes this semester, Career Preparedness, which is a class that prepares our ninth graders for their future in financial literacy and those types of things. And because I have two degrees in management, I teach the management principals' class as well. I love the ninth graders, but this class is my favorite. We get to do a lot of fun things. We've been to a Board of Education meeting. One of the things that they need to see is how business is conducted, how boards meet, and how things are taken care of, how things are handled, how business is conducted. When we leave here today, we will go to Red Lobster, and they will go through a mock interview. We've been talking about soft skills and those types of things, because we learned that that's what industry says a lot, is that our young people are lacking in the soft skills. And so we are doing, I know a lot has been said about Gaston City Schools, but we have some wonderful students at Gaston City Schools, and we are doing some good things. So I just wanted them to know how proud I am of them. We just finished up on a project where they had to demonstrate entrepreneurial skills, where they came up with a business plan, they came up with a product or a service that they were going to pitch to three judges on kind of like a Shark Tank style. We had, Dr. Wayne Watts was one of our judges' coach, Reginald Huff, and he was a sit-in for Brent Morgan and Ms. Charlotte Worthy. And so they pitched their business idea, their business plans. They had to have all the financials in place. And so our Bundles of Joy Daycare Center was the one that actually won, but we had another one, and they said it was a very close judging in that. But we've learned about managerial styles. We've done things to prepare them for life after high school and to get them to thinking about what it is that they want to do in the future. This is tenth through twelfth graders. I think we have about four seniors in the class. And so it's just our honor and privilege to be here today, and thank you for the opportunity.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kimball. Thank you for the great work that you do with these young people. This is, you know, this is one of, this is, I think, maybe the last two or three years you've brought the kids up, so we always look forward to that and appreciate it. And young people, don't miss the message. Please don't miss the message. You're very capable, and I think every adult in this room, every adult in this city realizes that. Right now, the opportunity lies with the system serving you at a higher level, but you are very capable, and you guys are doing an outstanding job, so keep it up. Keep it up. Be all you want to be and can be. Yeah, the seniors, if you want to raise your hand, recognize yourself, that'd be fine. All right, we're proud of you, and good luck. They'll be graduating here soon, so good luck to you, and we're excited about what the future holds for you. But again, don't you let a lot of this talk bother you. You young people are a lot more talented, you know, Mayor and I talk about this a lot. You're a lot more talented and a lot smarter than we ever could think to be, and you're also facing a lot more challenges than we could ever think about. So, but you're equipped to deal with them, and again, as adults and as a system...
And again, as adults and as a system, we've just got to serve you at a higher level, and that's what's important. So keep up the good work, keep up the good work for sure. All right, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.